Two.
Good evening. Welcome to our workshop session. It is 6:01 PM. All members are present. The first item on the agenda is the City of College Park Strategic Plan Update from the Governance Customer Service Committee. And I believe that Ms. Johnson is going to be leading the conversation in regard to this topic.
Pass it. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am delighted to be here and give you an update from Governance and Customer Service. We've got a slideshow we can just present and kind of walk you through. So we've, the Strategic Planning Committee, we've got the strategic goals, the core values and the governance and customer service updates, what we're going to walk you through this evening. So next slide, Chevila. So we've got the five strategic goals tonight. I'm going to give you an update specifically on the Governance and Customer Service. Chevila, next slide. Just our wonderful backgrounds we've been using. So we're going to outline those core values, which is listed here. We've got the service. And the two pages worth of the core values that we're all, we're trying to feature each day, I mean, excuse me, each month. And then we've got the, the charge for the team for governance and customer service there. So then I'm going to give you an update. So I'm leading the committee, but we do have 11 members that have been we, we, uh, meeting weekly, excuse me, bi-weekly Fridays from nine to 10. We've picked out two goals and activities that we're focusing on. And the first one is IT with the expand of infrastructure and physical information technology, which Michael Hicks is leading that for us. And some of the milestones that we've done is, um, we created a questionnaire survey for IT needs for the departments. And we actually got that out. We, um, sent that out April 26th. Um, Michael Hicks sent that out. So we'll be able to have that information and our goal was for the department heads to be able to put those needs out there. And we would have liked to have done it for this year's fiscal budget, but we weren't able to do that. So we're going to go for next year. This way we can gather that information, give everybody the opportunity to see what they need to do to help with governance and customer service with these IT needs and with the help of, um, Michael Hicks and IT department work on strategic goaling for that for next year's fiscal. So we've completed the questionnaire February 20, you know, 2021. We actually got, we were looking at June 2021, actually getting the survey out, but we will do that in April so that we'd be prepared for June 22. So that's what those anticipated completion dates are. So if there's any questions in regards to that activity and object, objectives for our committee? Do you have anything regarding that?
No, I, I have a question. Were the the feedback that we think we're going to get, is it going to relate more to the technology or the, the workflow or how the two interact? Or how does the survey work?
Good question. I think we directly, we're just looking for the needs to help service better, whether it's, it's our department or the customers or the ease, um, to make the departments work together or whatever those specific needs are so that we could bring them to y'all. If there's something, um, we needed to look at the budget that might be, you know, something substantial amount for a purchase that we could be able to be prepared and know that the committee knows that and that IT knows that and that we can present that to Mayor and Council for pushing for the budget.
So we're, we're really looking at primarily the interface between customer service and the customer.
Or necessarily the needs for that department to make things easier in a general sense for the department.
For the department itself as well.
Correct, correct.
So it could either be the customer served by customer service, namely our citizens, or it could be the, uh, needs to maintain a more efficient or effective apartment.
Correct. Whatever those needs are across the board. Um, if there's some sort of software that they were looking for, some sort of smaller, you know, something to make their job and more proficient for the customer service or for their department. So, okay.
So if I wanted to, if I wanted to have, uh, let's say a customer wanted, now that we're out of COVID now, or we're going to be out of COVID. So let's look to the future. We're out of COVID. But you've got some customer that wants to come in and, uh, well, take, for example, your meetings that you're having even right now on, uh, uh, utility, uh, grants and so forth. That could be done via Zoom meeting, for example. So you could say, well, we need technology, although we have that at this point. We have technology to do Zoom meetings now to service the customer. Is that, that fall in that category?
Right. It would be up to that department to decide what those needs would be. And it could be as small as some software programs to help with flyers. It could be from, or you know, a bigger program with HR that they may need for payroll or just whatever those needs were. It was up to the department. We were just getting a survey per se.
Okay, good.
And whatever, what we're utilizing currently, um, if we need some training on those, um, software programs. I think that was part of that IT, um, question too. Do you need more, you know, training on New World? Do you need training on, um, Quantum? Or, you know, specifically some of those needs to make your job more proficient. Okay. So, um, on to the next, um, objective we were looking at for the standard operating procedures. Some sort of, um, policy put in place to help those departments get those written established guidelines. And Michelle Alexander did an awesome job on getting a, a format together. And we were able to, um, get the format together. And then also meet with the city manager and kind of discuss what we were looking at. So how that workflow worked on, you know, from one department to another. If there was needs outside of your department to get a standard operating procedure together. So we were able to do that in February and we're, um, finished it up in, um, March, meeting with the city manager. We sent out actually April 22nd, 26th to the department heads, this form for them to review and, um, start implementing. And if we need to reach out to those department heads to help get these forms, you know, set up so they can start ironing out from, you know, from their department site on what they're looking at to get these operations in place. So, and then that would be established in the next couple of years for people to work on all their policies to have them written. So that we can, you know, have them somewhere for everybody to look at. So that was what we're working on. We've done a great deal of, um, focusing on these two things. And there's still some more things to work on outside of that, but, um, these were two accomplishments. I thought we did a great job as a committee working together and good, good conversations for governance and customer service for this committee.
Ms. Johnson, uh, in regard to the SOPs, is the, is the goal eventually to make those accessible to the public? Or, I mean, how, how would you see, how would you see the information being distributed both within the organization and for people who might need to understand how, you know, things work in building and inspections, for instance, or the planning department, something like that?
So I know that we had discussed with our objectives and activities were to be able to have those somewhere for anybody to grab them, whether they're, um, Omni forms for us to have. And then, you know, maybe looking at like the police station has transparency to know what those policies are. Those are discussions we haven't, you know, we've just gotten the form together and working on those standard operating procedures. But those are things that we have written out to work on, on how we're going to continue to be transparent on what we're looking at. So.
Also Mayor, in my mind, when you pull up a department, you should be able to click on and, and have their SOPs. So when we get them all straightened out, it will be transparent to the, to the public. Because when I look at that department, see what they do, I should also be, be able to look at their standard operating procedures.
And that might help us, uh, because when, when people think of, I'm going to bring up those two departments again, building inspections and planning. They may not know exactly where to go to get what they need done. But if they have a better understanding of how each department operates and they're able to, uh, have that information from the get-go, it's going to save a lot of time, possible headaches, et cetera.
Right. There were some really good discussions within the committee regarding that specifically with building permits and, and how those departments are working together and how to make sure, just knowing what the workflow is. And that's something Michelle Alexander worked really hard at doing. So it's, it'll be worth getting it out there.
Fantastic.
All right. Well, thank you guys.
Any additional questions for Ms. Johnson?
No, I just think it's great that, that you're looking at, uh, items like the standard operating procedures where people that don't understand what goes on in each department, like we talked about, uh, the mayor talked about. They can, they can learn. They can go online. They can learn, better understand what's going on. So thanks to you and your committee for working together. First of all, y'all did a great job.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is consideration of proposed revisions to the City of College Park's purchasing and purch- Ms. Moore came to slide on me. I was reading it directly from there. Um, thank you. Purchasing Department Policies and Procedures Manual.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Willis Moody, Purchasing Fleet Administrator. Um, just wanted to bring before you a, uh, a draft of the purchasing policies. The, uh, last time, as you'll see, the last time the policies were considered and adopted was August of 2011. So we did notice a lot of areas within the policy that needed revision to bring up to standard across the board. So I have been working with Danielle at the, uh, City Attorney's Office to come up with a, a stronger set of purchasing policies and, uh, add some new sections and update the verbiage. So it's more standardized across, um, College Park in all departments. So you should have received two separate packages. Um, one has the version with the old policy and the new policy that was, that I wanted to, uh, include, which is highlighted in yellow. And your second package has the recommendations from the City Attorney's Office for corrections and updates in each section. So we'll have a better flow to the policy structure when needed.
All right. Mr. Moody, are, are you ready for questions?
I'm ready for questions.
All right. Uh, I noticed at least in one spot, we're referred to as a city commission. I think it may have been a
It was.
cut paste kind of thing. Um, so I think there's other commission references, but there was one sort of distinct reference. And so that should be switched out. Um, in regard to campaign contributions, I saw that we're, that people need to affirm every year, vendors need to affirm every year that they, what campaign contributions that they make to, uh, any elected officials. Are we being active? Are we sending out something every January and saying, you've got to say who you, uh, contributed to? Or are we anticipating, are we expecting people to self-report?
I believe when the policy was, uh, amended, Winston, you have to help me, um, in 2019, that was included in the policy just with the expectation that they would self-report on any activity and contributions.
Now, okay, I've got a, I've got a, I've got a, I've got a companion question to that. So what if it's to an event, but not a candidate for office? Where does that fit?
Wes, I have to let you help me on that question.
I'm not aware that that's covered at all.
Do we want it covered? I mean, it seems to me that if the idea is that we don't want vendors to have undue influence on an elected official, that a campaign contribution is one thing, but there are other ways in which to contribute that don't necessarily go into a campaign account, but could curry favor. So it's, it's, from my perspective, I think we should expand it. I mean, if it goes, if it goes into, I mean, if someone's doing an event and you know, if, if, if we're doing a backpack giveaway, if we're, if we're doing whatever the case may be, and a vendor makes a contribution to that, I don't, I don't see the harm of, of disclosing that. But what does the body think?
What if, say, I had a, uh, a meeting with, with a group of my citizens? And, uh, restaurant XYZ says, hey, I'll furnish, uh, chicken and drinks and so forth. They need to report that? Is that what you're saying?
I am saying, let's talk about it. What are your thoughts?
Is this, I'm confused. Is this related to what we've done bidding? Is it just a person who going to bid on a, um, a solicitor?
Current vendors and those who might, who might bid, yes.
Well, what about the vendors who don't bid because we don't require bid and they've had contracts for decades? How do they get excluded from this language or in this language?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So we have a lot of vendors that don't bid because, um, they provide a service. So we get around bidding. How do we exclude them from this language? And it just relates to those that do bid? You know, because they're still a vendor like I use.
I, I don't, I don't have a problem with expanding it. I mean, I.
But that's beyond this though. We talking about procurement.
Sure, we're talking about procurement, but in terms of transparency and, and ethics, I don't see.
I thought, I thought we covered this in our City of Ethics Language. I thought a lot of this was superseded in that language.
The ethics policy largely covers, um, and this is a, this is a kind of a broad brush stroke, but it largely covers self-dealing by elected officials. Um, and so it really is, it's about what we as elected officials are doing more than what others are doing. But I, I threw it out there because I want to, I wanted to have a conversation about it and see what your thoughts were. There's a lot of silence.
Well, I, I feel like it doesn't matter to me either way. I just like, if a person wanted like the bookbag giveaway, for an example. We do, we do have people that donate bookbags and they just don't want their name to be a part of it. I don't want them to stop donating bookbags because of that, you know, but if it gotta be, you know, you gotta tell what you're doing. Oh, I don't, I don't have a problem with either way. I just don't want to stop people from doing something. They, they, they don't want to be the person that, you know, just be out there and say, well, I did this for the city. I did this. But they, they do donate stuff. I don't want to stop that part of it.
Well, there are, there are people who, um, like for instance, um, folks who do business with the city that donated toys for Christmas. That's, that's fantastic. And we, and we appreciated that. And those toys got distributed to kids. Um, do we want to to have people acknowledge that? I mean, if, if you're not doing business with the city councilman Taylor, like if there's just someone who says, I want to make sure kids have backpacks. I don't have a contract with the city. That wouldn't, that wouldn't apply here. Um, you know, if you're just, if you're a business owner and say, hey, I want to make sure that kids have backpacks. I mean, this is, this is for folks who are doing business with the city.
Well, you know, I see like maybe three categories here.
Okay.
You've got a case where you have a vendor that donates something to a particular councilman's campaign. Then you've got a vendor that donates something to a particular councilman's event. So, and you know, if, if, let's say I had a Christmas toy drive, which I don't. But if I did, and somebody donates to the clay, clay, Ambrose Clay's Christmas toy drive, then I would think that could create undue influence. The third category is a lot grayer. And that's where we say, well, if you're going to do business with the city, you ought to be able to support our community. And we've said that, this council has said that. And so, um, you know, what, what's your contribution, financial institution number one? What's your contribution, restaurant number five, et cetera, et cetera? And that has been done.
I don't think it's been done in the, in the last, uh, let's see, 16 months. I don't think, I don't think we've had that conversation in the last 16 months, but.
I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, we've had people in front of the council.
Yes.
And we've asked them.
Yes.
What are you doing for this community? And we have, and I, I would even venture to say, although I couldn't put my finger on it, you may be right, Mayor. But I would venture to say that even in some of the discussions we've had in the last 16 months, that there hasn't, there has been an implication that we expect you to be a part of the community, to help with the community, whoever you are. Well, take, take Woodward, for example. Woodward does a fantastic job of supporting Main Street with kids for the cleanup and so forth. It's not a con, I, I may have responsibility for Main Street in my ward, but it's not a, you know, it's not for me, it's not the clay cleanup of Main Street. And maybe it's insulated in the sense that it is the Main Street Association that's doing it. But we do have the director who we pay out of the city budget for the Main Street Association. So you see what I'm trying to do? I'm trying to draw in no stretch of my imagination, would that be something that we would have to report? But somewhere in that gray area, you're going to cross a line that says that's where, that's, that's where, how many, uh, restaurant, five, how many, I don't know, free meals did you donate to the, to the pandemic, uh, senior meal delivery service or something like that? There's where the gray areas, I think it's easy to sort out direct contributions to councilmen.
And, and I think for me, I'm more concerned, well, first of all, from what I've seen in the last 16 months in terms of who been getting business, it's certainly not people that look as if they may have, may have not donated to an elected official. Because most of those decisions are simply, look like they've been made since before they come to council. I don't see one bid that was overturned by our votes since I, in the last 16 months. So if anybody need to be, uh, this needs to apply to, it'd be more for staff than elected officials. That's number two. I think more the emphasis and spirit and thought process ought to be trying to get women and minority more involved in the process. That's basically been ignored in the last 16 months. For, as a matter of fact, most of the bid awards that I've seen in the last 16 months has not even really given any consideration for women or minorities. And even though we haven't done a study, this council and mayor spent years trying to, uh, walk a fine line and support. And then the last thing is that I don't even see any credit for people doing business who live in the city, who, who live in our community. So I mean, we can talk for, continue to talk about how to look at what elected officials may or may not be getting awards. But A, the decision's already made before we vote and not one has been overturned by any elected official.
I think you bring up, oh, I'm sorry, sir. Go ahead.
And two, I think we need to be trying to put some thought process on how to support local businesses in the bid process. I don't see any local, no, no, but, but the, uh, the lady last week, I see very few businesses involved in, in businesses College Park.
I'm glad you brought that up. Um, as a member of the GMA Equity and Inclusion Commission, we actually had this discussion last week. I'm sorry, last month, uh, at our meeting because I brought up the point that for communities such as ours, especially since we have been devastated by COVID, uh, undertaking a study, uh, to be able to give preferences to particular groups, such as women or minorities, is really kind of out of our reach at this point, uh, because of the, the financial constraints that we have. And there was a woman from Augusta on the line who talked about, uh, preferences that they give to local small businesses. And I do believe the, the policy that we have been looking at and discussing thus far actually does address that on page 44 of 144 of the digital packet. There is, um, a reference to local preference. And certainly when we're talking about those local businesses, they really are the ones that are small businesses that are run by people of color, people who, uh, are generating money in our local economy. So while we may not be able to undertake the study that it would be necessary to, to have to show a disproportionate impact on those particular, um, groups. I do think this is a good first step and one that we should embrace. So back to the issue of how, whether or not the body wishes to expand that to not only campaign contributions, but say, uh, elected official sponsored events. Would that make sense?
I, I think it should be. Anything that gives you, uh, an edge up. The name of the game is try to make the playing field level. Because, uh, an elected official that's been incumbent for a number of years automatically has an advantage over someone who's a newcomer. And not that they, whether they should or they shouldn't, if they've been doing a good job, yeah. Better to know the devil I know than the devil that I don't know. But, um, but having said that, anything that adds to that, just beyond the fact that you're known and what have you, anything that adds that, well, I have this, toy drive or have this other thing. And, uh, well, hey, you can make me look good if you give to my toy drive. You can make me look good if you, um, buy filet mignon for my, uh, for my ward one meeting.
What is you saying that you don't want us to vote on it? Or you want them to say if they bid on a project? If they wanted a successful bid, which basically this is a mute point because, but anyways, are you saying that if they bid on a project?
And they. They just, they just acknowledge their contributions.
Yeah. So they, they acknowledge what they, they disclose what they've contributed. That's all.
You're not saying they can't do it. It's great. I'd love to have filet mignon.
Wait, hold on. All right, all right, all right. Wait, gentlemen, 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 gentlemen. Councilman Gay, go ahead and finish what you had to say.
Official, the elected officials also know how to acknowledge it when they vote. Hey, guys. But I think we covered this in so many areas in our ethics and, and, but I mean, is this, is, I'm just asking, is that, is that the point of his changes here? Or we staying on this much longer than we need to? Is that what Moody is trying to do? Get elected officials to say they got some money or something?
No, it's not. It, it would not be, the onus would not be upon us. It would be upon the vendors.
Sure.
Now they, they already have to disclose it in the, in the process, um, of applying for a particular job. But one, I think that we probably should be more active in making sure that vendors have to disclose on a yearly basis, whether or not that's an email or some form that goes out to them that they have to report. And we shouldn't necessarily rely on them self-reporting. Mr. Moody, can you give me some sort of feedback about what, what, uh, in terms of that self-reporting? How we're, how we're seeing folks self-report? Has it been successful thus far?
It, to me, it has not been successful. Um, looking through their packages, they may not disclose anything. So that means I would need to probably go and look at campaign, campaign finance reports or something of that nature. But no vendor typically that's bidding on anything, uh, discloses that they've had, um, any dealings with any officials or city staff or employees.
I think, let me just jump in. I, I think that, you know, if they contribute to an elected official's, uh, campaign in some way or another, like sponsoring meetings and stuff, I think they need to report that. If they're sponsoring things for the city, let's just say, let's just take Rekindle, people that got involved with that, they People that got involved with that, they don't need to re, they don't need to put that in. But if it's to a campaign or to an individual, then I think they do, and that's just my opinion.
So if the individual, if the elected official is individually sponsoring, sponsoring an event, then a disclosure would be necessary or to a campaign contribution or a campaign.
And that goes back, I think Ken and I are saying the same thing.
I think you are.
Second, second category.
Okay. All right. So that cat, that covers categories one and two. So do, do we want to be more active about making them self-report in that we are actively asking them each year as opposed to, uh, waiting for them to report?
But the, the other thing is, we put on the city website, city sponsored events that has allowed people to donate to and strike direct. So so I, I just still think this is being covered in so many other areas that it's just too much to say about one particular item that's already. We already have triggers in place to, to self-report. And that final thing is, you know, some events don't get money. You have to be creative, because if you don't, and you don't have the votes on council, to, like, you may have, uh, one lady may get forty thousand dollars for her event. Another person may get discretionary funds. So then, events are also really geared to benefit community, the citizens. They don't necessarily be to benefit the elected official that had a bit. And if you don't get money from your own city, your own college, I mean, what do you want? You want, you want, you want to keep the vendors from even supporting anybody? So it's.
Not at all. I, I, I don't, I think it is, it is to, simply about disclosure. It's not about dissuading, but it's about transparency in my mind.
Let me, let me throw one other point out, Mayor. This is a double edged sword. Let's say we're, somebody comes up, we coming up for a boat, having to do with some business. And we, and there are two businesses maybe that wanna, want to have one slot, whether it be a liquor store or whatever, and we've got one slot open, you got two businesses. Now, maybe one business has contributed to, uh, let's say, Councilman Gay's Ward Four meeting, or Ward Four Festival or something. And the second business hasn't contributed to anything in the city. And they're equivalent in every other respect. I'm not in Ward Four, I'm not Councilman Gay, but why wouldn't I vote for, when I find out as part of the packet, that one firm contributed to the Ward Four Festival? And the other fir, firm hasn't done anything for, for anybody in the city. Why wouldn't I vote for the, even though I'm not Ward Four and I'm not Councilman Gay, why wouldn't I vote for the, the, the company that is contributing to the city, if they are equal in other respect?
Point well taken.
Nor have I seen one bid that we voted on and we overturned that staffed indirect. It seems as if the decision is made before they come to council. I'm not seeing one bid that our vote changed the recommendation of staff.
Noted. So are, is there additional feedback for Mr. Moody?
Uh, I, I would be inclined to say, consider categories one and two and forget about category three.
I think that makes sense. I think, I think you're right that it gets a little bit murky. Uh, Mr. Moody, do you have enough direction in, in that regard, based upon a conversation?
Yeah, so, um, just strike, uh, category number three under that section. And, uh, four and five would actually move into those, those positions. But, uh, working with Danielle, we will look at verbiage for, um, elected official sponsored events to, uh, go into that area, that section. Would there be a dollar amount associated with that?
I don't know. I'll draw out a number, anything over a hundred dollars.
I think that's, I mean, considering that that is the limit for our ethics, I think that makes sense.
Yep.
Okay. We will take care of that section and, uh, make mention of, uh, for elected officials. Okay.
All right. Any other feedback for Mr. Booty?
Yeah, I, I had some more general comments. When I looked at the packet, I see a purchasing policy, two sets of purchasing policy. They're both outlined in yellow. So the yellow areas are the areas where the original policy has been rewritten, correct?
The, um, areas in yellow would be the addition to the, um, old policy that's still, that's current right now. Had the, uh, city attorney, uh, we loaded theirs to, uh, and they redlined a lot of the, um,
Right.
Policy.
Right.
From the twenty eleven adoption.
Okay, but what I'm trying to say is, the two documents, I believe, are the same. Am I mistaken about that? I think the two documents in there are the same. It's just that, one, we have the benefit of the city attorney's comments. Whereas we don't have the benefit of anybody else's comments.
Correct.
Okay. When I read through the city attorney's comment, so what I did, I said, well, do I want to read every word in a document? Cause you know, I tend to read every word.
Yes.
Do I want to read every word in this document? If it's not pretty close to final form? And when I, when I read the attorney's redline comment, this is why I didn't send a head, a head, oh, heads up, Willis. Uh, when I read the city attorney's comments, there were numerous places where, uh, Danielle said, uh, this area is duplicative of this other area, and I think it really should just be moved over there to keep it in one spot. Or she, there was a couple of sections where there was something under, uh, the state ordinance, state legislative, uh, rules, that all these things should be included as exceptions, et cetera, et cetera. There were a number of these. Uh, after I read through those and then went back, I said, well, I think this thing, I like the attorney's comments. I tend to agree with the attorney's comments. So my inclination was, let's get the attorney's comments incorporated. Let's get those sections rewritten and, and the duplicity taken, duplication, not duplicity, uh, taken out. And then send it back and I'll read every word. And that's where I came from.
I'd like to see a final version.
Absolutely. I kind of thought today was just, we've got a working draft, taking feedback, and we'll come back around.
Yeah, that's the way I look.
You did a lot of good work, too. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Lots of work on it.
Huge, huge improvement.
Yes.
Um, just, just to make note, excuse me, um, Danielle and myself, we actually spent an hour and a half on Thursday redoing every section that she commented on. So it has the flow, uh, for a draft to present back to you. This was more just to show you where it was and, and what the attorney felt we need to make corrections on in order to make this a complete package. So we do have something, uh, draft form after all of her corrections and additions that we can present to you. I can send it to you tonight or tomorrow, uh, for your full review, since we made those edits from the second piece of the package that you have.
Well, as you know, what would really be helpful, and this doesn't just apply to you, but when we've got a, a major document like this, that was started out very old, God knows it needed to be revised. What would be really helpful, if in addition to the document that we're reviewing, we got sort of a high level summary of, well, we were worried about, uh, increasing emphasis on contributions to elected officials or, or things that would influence virtual officials. So we made some changes for that. In other words, if you could list philosophically what you thought needed to be changed in the document and how the document was roughly changed, not the details of it, but just say, well, this section had to be written to, rewritten to incorporate this.
Sort of an executive summary of the changes?
Yeah, that would be a very helpful in understanding what you were trying to do and why this is an improvement over the old document and how it needs to be adapted. And that summary, it wouldn't have to be long, you know, you're talking maybe a page or two. And that would make it a lot easier to understand, well, what were they trying to do here? Does that come out? Does it, does, does it seem like that's been accomplished in here? That's just me personally, it would make my job easier.
All right. Any other feedback for Mr. Moody? Hearing none. Thank you, sir. Appreciate all your work on this. I know that, uh, it has probably taken quite a while and we are grateful for your efforts.
Big job, difficult job.
But necessary work.
Yep.
All right. We're moving on to item three, discussion of proposed amendments to the alcoholic beverages ordinance governing alcohol sales in the city of College Park at establishments that do not typically serve food. Mr. Denmark?
Good evening, good evening, Mayor Council. This is, um, a kind of a continuation of a discussion we started at the last meeting and we've had for several meetings about potentially revising our alcohol ordinance uh, to be more competitive with some of our neighboring jurisdictions. As we've talked about previously, the ability to sell alcohol in College Park is tethered to, uh, the food sales requirement. Uh, for on premises consumption, you have to have food sales that represent at least fifty-one percent of your gross revenues. That requirement, um, many feel, uh, have, has made the city uh, not an attractive destination for certain, um, businesses, newer businesses, innovative businesses that, uh, want to serve alcohol, but do not necessarily want, uh, to be restaurants. I, in, in that they would have fifty-one percent of their revenues from food sales. So there, there are two options. Um, the first option is to do nothing and leave things where they are. Then there's the kind of do something, and if we're going to do something, uh, the question is, is what? We've, the last time, we kind of just looked at a bunch of ordinances from other jurisdictions, uh, based on what's in those ordinances and the conversations that, uh, the council had the last time. I've kind of proposed, uh, five options that you might consider. The goal here is for the council to give some direction, uh, on what, if any of these options that you like. And from there, a kind of draft and ordinance revision that would incorporate, uh, one of these options or several of these options, uh, for your review and consideration. Uh, and these are the options that I came up with based on the conversation that Mayor Council had the last time. Uh, but there may be other options, uh, that I failed to consider, uh, that you would want to explore in terms of an ordinance update.
I, I would be really interested in having a comparison of what other cities are doing uh, and how our ordinance stacks up.
Okay.
I was kind of expecting that. Cause I, I, I agree with, you know, we, we did talk about, uh, a good number of these options. But in terms of the, the goal, i- if, if it is a shared goal of this body to, um, to, to be on level with our peers in the, in the region, the, the printouts of the ordinances was not really sufficient to synthesize the information that we would need to kind of look at, look at this holistically. For me, at least.
Okay, so you, you would want kind of like a spreadsheet that listed the owners? Okay, well, I, I can certainly do that. I can, I can certainly do that. It's, um, I, I could create what is in our ordinance, what's in other ordinances, and it could be kind of an adagland spreadsheet that would, that would, uh, would, would help you do that.
That would be helpful for me. I don't know if it would be helpful for the rest of the body.
Well, I, I'll tell you what would be helpful for me, and if I had had the time, I was gonna do it, but I, I, I didn't get to it. I'd like to just see a simple decision tree. I'm not saying I wouldn't like to see what the mayor was talking about, or some kind of a spreadsheet for comparison purposes. In my mind, what I visualize, if you know what a flow chart is, I think most people have seen flow charts, even if you're not a programmer. Simple decision tree. So at the top of the chart, you say, you go one of two ways. Either alcohol is the primary product of the establishment or alcohol is not the primary product of the establishment. On the, on the primary side, you go down and you say, you break that up in, into categories. Alcohol with food, alcohol in, eat, uh, drunk in the place, alcohol only taken out. In other words, you can break it up into categories. And you can actually do this in a spreadsheet format, it's called a decision table. But the bottom line is, you, you break this thing up into small pieces, into categories, and you say, do I want that? Do I want an establishment that sells alcohol only? And does not allow takeout? Well, that's a bar. And it maybe has sandwiches as an ancillary thing, but its primary product is answer. Do you want it? Yes, no. Does anybody else nearby have it? Does East Point have that? Does Hayville have that? You could, in a, in a decision table, I'm combining the mayor's comment with this. You could say, do they have that? Do they have that? Uh, alcohol takeout, primary and only product, is alcohol the only product? So you have one that's only drink in, one that's only drink out, one that's both. And maybe you break it down as whether they serve food or not. You can break it down into those categories, and it's very simple. You just look down the chart and say, would I want that? No, that's a bar. I don't want a bar. Would I want people to be able to take out only? Well, what is that? Uh, I don't know. Well, what kind of takeout? Can they walk the streets with the takeout? Or do they have to put it in their trunk and drive home with it? That, that would make my decision real easy, cause, and it'd be very fast. You just go through it and say, yeah, I don't want that, I don't want that. And where it's, you start now talking about ancillary on the other side, where alcohol is not the primary product. Then you ask the question, okay, so it's an art, our, our, art, uh, museum or, uh, art studio. So, uh, well, what percentage of their profit? I don't know how else to measure it. You can't measure it by pieces of things. So what percentage of their profit has to come from art versus alcohol? Ten, twenty, thirty, forty, whatever. You put that in there. What it has to be, since it's primary, it has to be more than fifty has to come from art. And now you go to another category. Well, what about, uh, what about a barber shop? Can you have one barber and a whole bar there and say, hey, I've got, I've got a barber shop? But what everybody is really coming in is doing drinking and watching the guy, one guy get his haircut. So that's very easy to do if you think through the thing logically, and it's very easy to analyze.
And I think it's also going to be easier if we see, I mean, we don't have to reinvent the wheel here. That's, I, I don't think we are here to reinvent the wheel. Uh, but I do think that it's, it's clear that what we've got right now could be tweaked. And it would be extraordinarily helpful to be able to see in a, in a spreadsheet, however, what kind of chart you would like to present it, what others are doing.
And, and I have a comment. So outside of the special events, to where I've noticed on council, people come and say they want to serve alcohol at their events. And the one that we are talking about, I just, for an example, and I'm not saying I'm for against it, I'm just asking in terms of putting it together. Logistically, like, for example, I could now serve beer with the kids over at the soccer field to the parents. And how do you charge? And how is that enforced? And at night, clubs can't pour after a certain hour, so, but you can pour during the day. To me, logistically, outside of the special event, special permit event and a liquor license, it just sets up a whole lot of different challenges. That's all I'm saying.
I would agree, and I, and I. I would agree. And I, and I think that that some of our sister cities have addressed some of those challenges in their ordinances and structured them in such a way that allows them to anticipate some of those challenges and tackle them head on, which is why I think the information about what other cities are doing is so important and will be helpful as we deliberate.
Could we include uh marijuana?
That is against state law.
Oh, I thought it was legalized.
I, I just think that, you know, I think a chart would be great, you know, just looking down at this. When you make decisions, as, you know, you look at it and you kind of make the same decisions in your own mind. Yes, I'd like beer and wine. I'd like to have a uh time constraint on it. If you're going to serve hard liquor, you have to have fifty-one percent. Uh, and a special event could be approved under certain circumstances. But I think what we're doing, we're all saying the same thing. If we had a chart and we knew what other cities were doing, but if we had a chart, we could sit down and say, okay, this is the way we want to do it, and these are the items and how we want to do it.
Yeah, you know, Ken, the way you could do that, if you take a chart, whether it be on a decision tree or decision chart or spreadsheet, whatever you want to call it, you could set the condition on the chart. And then you could put color it. So it's got, if Hapeville doesn't, it it has a blue dot in it. And if East Point does it, it has a red dot. They vote to it, you got a blue and a red dot kind of thing. So it'd be really easy to see where each city was uh, what what portion of the chart they were occupying. Now, one thing I will mention, though, is I think we have to be careful about doing just keeping up with the Joneses. Uh, because just some, because some, a neighboring city does it, first off, doesn't make it's a good idea. Secondly, it doesn't mean it's a good idea in all parts of our city. And thirdly, we probably have, will have with Six West, virtually every condition that any city could have with regard to alcohol sales.
And we have to be careful about, you know, the people have fought through pan, the pandemic and had to had beer, wine and alcohol and barely made it through. And now we're going to throw all these other things in there and we're gonna, we're gonna hurt their business. So, you know, there's a lot to think about.
Very definite possibility.
There is a lot to think about, but I think that we can make a better decision once we get that information presented to us in a more digestible format. So if there's not anything else to uh cover on this, I think that we can wrap up the discussion and and we'll pick it up at the next workshop session.
Amen.
All right. Uh, anything else to address or are we good until seven thirty?
We're good.
All right. So I will see everyone at seven thirty for the regular meeting. Take care, everybody.
Okay. Bye bye.